Make your way to your seats, please. Good morning. It's Monday, June the 23rd. Welcome to the Administrative Complex. This is Board of County Commissioners meeting regularly scheduled. It's a special day today. If you would, rise and I'll say a prayer for us and we'll have the pledge and then we'll get on about our business. Father, we thank you for this day and this special moment. Pray that you'll bless what happens here. Pray that the things that are said, the things that are discussed will be pleasing in your sight. We ask these things in the name of Jesus and for his sake. Amen. Commissioner Williamson, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business this morning will be swearing in. Judge, where are you? Judge Hilliard, if you would, sir, the floor is yours.
We could get all the folks up here. This is a photo opportunity, ladies and gentlemen. We want to get everybody in position. All right, Jair, our families go back generations, many generations. When your father left to address some health issues, Governor Bush appointed me to serve the people of Santa Rosa County in his place, and I was later elected. And now Governor Scott has appointed you, and you've been elected without opposition to serve the people of Santa Rosa County. And when I sat in this seat, I carried three books with me to every meal. The United States Constitution, the Florida Constitution, the Holy Bible. I see you've got a Bible. I know you have a copy of the Constitution, but I'm going to give you one of my copies that I've inscribed to you. I want you to put it in your pocket. And now you can say that that is the Constitution that was in your pocket on the day that you were sworn in to continue your father's legacy of service to the people of Santa Rosa County. And now, put your left hand on the Bible, please, and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jair Williamson...
I, Jair Williamson...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States of America...
The Constitution of the United States of America...
...and of the state of Florida...
And of the state of Florida...
...and that I will diligently and faithfully...
That I will diligently and faithfully...
...perform the duties of this office...
Perform the duties of this office...
...I am about to assume...
I am about to assume...
...so help me God...
So help me God.
God bless you and congratulations, best wishes to you all.
the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I said that I wasn't going to cry today, but I lied. And I hope that doesn't mean I'm already becoming a politician. I'm just joking. I'll save all the bad jokes for later. In all seriousness, two years ago, on August 14th, I had hugged my father, squeezed him a little tight, and I whispered into his ears that I did the best that I could, Dad. I did the best that I could. And what my dad did is he squeezed me a little tighter, and he responded with, "I know that this doesn't make sense right now, but I promise you that one day, probably not tomorrow, probably not next week, probably not even a year from now, but one day you will realize that losing an election is the greatest thing that ever happened to you, and I am so proud of you, and God's perfect plan always prevails." As I sit and have the honor to sit here today in this chair, I would like to thank the governor for his appointment. I'd like to thank the support of the community, all of you out there. I think it's clear that that moment my father spoke about has finally arrived, and I'm quite thankful that God's perfect plan always does prevail. Chairman Melvin, Commissioner Cole, Commissioner Salter, Commissioner Lynchard, to the rest of the county staff and the county employees and the citizens of Santa Rosa County, it truly is an honor and a privilege to sit up here and to be your newest public servant, and I look forward to working with you and for you over the next two years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Okay, it's time to move into the agenda, and I'll begin on my right. Commissioner Williamson, do you have any items to add?
Mr. Chairman, I have no changes, but I would like to note that later on today, it'll come out, that I'll be having a town hall style meeting on July 1st at the Pace Community Center. The town hall will start at 6:00 PM, and the purpose of this is to collect citizen input on the location of a new county judicial center.
Okay, if you would share that with the PIO, she will distribute that for you as well. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, no additions.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one addition today, concerns, ties in with some of the problems we've had with stormwater runoff and possible ideas for just a part solution or part of, a little bit of help to the problem.
Okay, sir, yes, let's see. It's going to be stormwater, so we will put that under Public Works. Commissioner Lynchard.
No changes, Mr. Chairman. Just would note, we had a town hall meeting down in District 5 at the Tiger Point Community Center Thursday night regarding stormwater and the recent floods. We had a very good turnout, good meeting. I want to thank Avis, Roger, and Hunter for coming down, Joy for putting it together. Very informative. We had a packed house, standing room only.
County Administrator.
Three items, Mr. Chairman. As I had sent the email, Friday is the HOK was not able to complete the preliminary work that they were, we contracted with them to do, you know, is it only really about a five-day turnaround from one meeting to when I've got to get the agenda out. So I need to remove items number one and item number nine, which is a proposal that we had regarding a water intrusion problem at the EOC. If we could remove those two items, Mr. Chairman, they're just not ready. And then to add one item is the annual tentative rate resolution for the 2014 MSBU projects. You have your public hearing, I believe, that's the first week in September that will, these are the tentative rates that will be advertised, and then you will review those rates at that public hearing and approve the final rates. But we need to do a resolution.
Okay, let's make that item number one under Administrative.
Or why don't you just make it 14? It's really going to be just an administrative, and we can get to it...
Okay, 14 is fine.
No rush.
County Attorney. Engineer, Ms. Bell. Avis, nothing. Okay, Economic Development Committee, Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any active items today. I would tell you that Shannon Ogletree and I, along with several other people, were working on several projects, and I hope in the next month or so we'll be able to bring some forward. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next is the Administrative Committee. Item number one has been pulled. Item number two is discussion of the use of the former Environmental Health Building for Healthy Start Coalition of Santa Rosa County Office Space. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a letter to me from Ms. Zimmerman, who's the Executive Director of the Healthy Start Coalition. Ms. Zimmerman's here, and as you see, she gives kind of the history of that organization that really goes back to the early 90s and late, Dr. Burt Sutton, who was the longtime director of Health in Santa Rosa County, and is one of a number of legacies that Dr. Sutton has, and certainly an enduring legacy between this and the Santa Rosa Community Clinic that was a vision of his, and just a number of things that positively impacted our counties. But they've been in business since the early 90s. You see, they, the school board had provided them with space for 17 years, and I think for the last number of years is the Santa Rosa Medical Center had offered them space, and they are asking to use the former Environmental Health Building that's on the corner of, right to the south of the current Health Department. It's about a 3,000 square foot building. Currently, we don't have a use for. It just, it seems pretty, they would take care of all the utilities, those type things. It would just haven't been occupied building that would at least provide some kind of function.
Okay, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number three is discussion of request from Milton Aviation Partners to amend the current lease to include additional property for expansion. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a letter from Milton Aviation Projects outlining their request, and then you see a schematic on the second page that essentially shows their leasehold interest or leasehold that they have and that their concern is, and then I believe they had come to the board maybe a year and a half, two years ago with this request, and that a portion of their property had been impacted with the development requirements, the retention pond, just the things that you currently need now to do business. And they are, they are expanding, and I don't know if they're here to make or articulate that request, but that was what... The difference, I guess if I saw a difference between this and two years ago, whenever they first brought it up, is certainly they've been in business this long, they've, they are getting more activity there. A complicating factor, as you know, is the other FBO, as you will, that kind of complicates a lot of these arrangements, seems like...
I remember that issue well. They had planned for an inadequately sized holding pond. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Things have really taken off, for no better use of words, taken off of our airport, our new FBO, both in aircraft maintenance, providing office space for Trident, which is a group that come to us and moved into some of this space for training, not only of private citizens for usage of personal aircraft, but also for our Whiting Field. In the next few weeks, we'll see a brand-new trainer coming out of there. They've, of course, these are independent aircraft, privately-owned aircraft, that we'll, that we'll see flying with orange and white colors on them. So also, we have now lifeguard ambulance, the air service, the new helicopter we have posted out here. So with this exponential growth that we've seen, and then the amount of property that was taken up with holding ponds, and if the board will remember, we also had them install trees, and then later we had to cut down trees on our own airport. I'd just like to see this move forward. Fueling has been installed out there with the large tanks. There's currently a, just a truck out there for refueling of helicopters because they take a different fuel. There is plans to immediately install another tank for Hilo fuel. Whiting is landing Helos there on the three pads that you see in the depiction. We hope through this, through the discussions I've had with this group out there, that we'll see with the helicopter fuel available, we'll see Whiting possibly doing some fueling there, and perhaps even Rucker doing fueling there, which increases, basically, I look at it as another way of protecting Whiting Field.
Okay. I know you're not, and you're waxing a bit long. We've, can get this detail in the backup?
It's not in the backup. I don't see anything that I've just said in the backup.
Okay, well, if you would, let's stay on point. The discussion is to amend the lease. We understand the importance of the airport.
I don't understand why you're interrupting me while I have the floor, sir.
Just ask you to be succinct and on point.
Yeah, I believe I am. Anyway, you know, perhaps if Rucker starts landing here and doing some fueling of aviation helicopters, Army Aviation helicopters, it strengthens our position, keeping Rucker here, or not keeping Rucker here, but keeping Whiting Field, you know, anything we can do to bolster that. So I've looked at this quite often and long, and see, you know, a lot of benefits in this. So I would definitely like to support this expansion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number four is discussion of an agreement and a resolution with the Emerald Coast Utility Authority for transportation and processing recyclables. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the current version of the source separated recyclers, loading, and transportation agreement with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority. As the board will remember at your last meeting, you had passed a tentative in a local agreement. Their board has reviewed that. As you can tell, they sent it to their attorney, and it's considerably longer than it was, but we're, we're working through the issues. I don't think that it significantly changed from the information that you had been given before, but we're trying to stay at that through and make sure. We'd like to move as quickly as we could to get this agreement going and get the recyclables processed. There's, I think there's a two-part action that we have to take, is the Emerald Coast had their board met last week, I believe, in what's considered their committee meeting, and then they issued a resolution saying that they felt like it was in their best interest to come to Santa Rosa County to provide this service, which for them, that kicks them into being able to do the agreement. They've asked that we approve or accept that resolution and then, and then ultimately approve the agreement, so. I think that any of the, like I said, it's, there's any more details, I think that we're, I think that we've worked through basically what they're going to do. They're essentially going to process and from, not process, they're going to use our pad to, as a transfer station to load recyclables and move to, move them to their processing, which I believe they're using in Montgomery.
Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've gone through this. I think it's a, it's a good proposal, good opportunity for Santa Rosa County to get back in the business of recycling. You know, we've come so far in the past few years that I think this, this will get us back on track. And also, would like to take a moment, we neglected at the outset to recognize Representative Clay Ingram, who has stopped by Santa Rosa County this morning. So, thanks for coming, Representative. We appreciate you being here.
Mr.? Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I too, I too support the contract with ECUA. I'm ready for us to get back in the recycling business. I'm glad Mr. Walker better explained the process because I think there's been some confusion out there on ECUA with the contract just for the south end versus the entire county, and then, then the separation point. I know I read some articles where a lot of people thought that they would be bringing it to our landfill for dumping, if you will, but that'd just be a separation or like a distribution point where they will pick up the recyclables and then transfer them, I believe, up into Alabama. So I just wanted that to be clear.
And really, the, our, that portion of our landfill is permitted as a transfer station, and that's what this will be. They will, they will load it from smaller trucks into their larger trucks that will then carry their material and our material to the processing center in Montgomery.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, Tim Hague from ECUA is in the audience today, and I'd like to thank Tim and the rest of that staff for working with us on that. It's very important for him. Thank you.
Do you want to speak to this issue? Come forward, please. Give us your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, just stand tight, stand, stand still. Yes, Commissioner Williamson.
I think recycling, that's fine. You forgot, it's been empty for a while, so you just don't look this way anymore, but I'm going to start making you look this way a little bit. I think recycling definitely important to the future of our community, but I would like to know that this is a two-year contract, is that correct?
It's currently drafted. It's a two-year contract with this board. After some discussion, was agreeable to, and I believe ECUA is agreeable to.
And do we have any type of opt-out if they're not satisfactory to our needs and wants?
There are several opt-outs, including if the laws were to change or something like that, but there is a 90-day unconditional opt-out. For any reason, we can withdraw.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. I'm sorry. Ms. Cantu, please, turn your light on.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. I just happened to be doing some recycling, some sorting over the weekend, and I saw something on one of the bottles that said, "In California, and Maine, I think, and Connecticut, deposit required." And I wondered why we don't have Florida on there. So I called one of the companies and asked how to get on the recycling or paying deposits for recycling, and they said it's something that your state legislature has to do something about. My question is, why don't we get Florida on there and be just as conscientious about getting all the stuff recycled, all the plastics and bottles and cardboard and so forth that we can? And I realize it's going to take a little bit longer time than just starting tomorrow, but my suggestion is that we talk to the state legislature and see if we can't get a deposit required on as many relatively large things as possible. I think if you look on your glass there, your container of water doesn't have recycle on there. It says it may not be recyclable in your area. But again, I think that's something that we as a county in this state can get something started, and it would benefit everybody, not just in Florida, but everywhere. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and you just did brief one of the most energetic legislatures in the Florida House, so I'm sure that they're sitting there making mental notes.
I'll talk with you later. Thanks.
Yes, sir, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim Hague with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority, members of the commission, wanted to, first off, just express our appreciation for the ability to work with you guys on bringing the recycling back to the county. We look forward to working with you through the term of this agreement. I did want to mention, I'm not quite sure exactly what version of the agreement you have before you today, but my understanding, speaking with our attorney this morning, he is working with the county attorney here to, I think, do some, some final edits to that agreement that I believe was sent out on Friday. So I just wanted to let you know, we are doing some final fine-tuning, and we expect to take this to our board this Thursday.
Okay, well, we're going to attempt to deal with this Thursday. If it's, if it's ready, and if it's not, then we'll put it into the next set of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, thank you, sir, for your input. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number five is discussion of recruitment, of recruitment for tourist direct, tourist development director position. Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, is, if the, if the board will recall, in April, the, April, in February, the board had reviewed potentially moving the current, what's called the Executive Director of the TDC into the county structure. Directed me to go back, look where to place it in the county, meet with the TDC, and start working through some of the issues. We've made progress particularly on where inside the county, I did meet with the TDC at that time. Mr. Melvin was the chair, and solicited their input. They're positive with it. As you know, Ms. Wilks has announced her retirement effective August 1st, and so we'll just go ahead and initiate, or recommend initiating the recruitment process for that, that position. And in your background would be a salary survey that we did for the other, for four other similar positions that are located within the county structures, and I believe it's in Ocalusa, Pinellas, Alachua, and Hernando. Hernando's probably the closest in terms of scale to ours. You see the job description, and then you see the salary range, $55,000 to $70,000, and that's a hiring range that we would, that we would propose. I would expect that we would advertise this for three, three weeks. It's a little short, but probably three weeks. I believe we'll get some quality candidates, and then we'll just go through the process that with, with Mr. Ogletree and I working through the interview process.
Okay, Commissioner Salter. I apologize. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't recall, I recall the discussion of bringing the tourist development director under, under the roof of the county and as an employee of the county, but I, I'll have to get with staff and see what the final outcome of that was. I remember the discussion, but I don't remember voting to do it that way. I personally feel like, you know, growing our government, growing personnel that Santa Rosa County hires is not a good thing. I think the TDC executive director position has been filled wisely in the past, and certainly it has to be filled again, but my thoughts are that the TDC boards shortlist this, you know, they're, they're more directly affected and directly in contact with these people and work, you know, monthly on having meetings, and then once it's shortlisted, that this board make a final decision of a person, but I have some disagreement with wanting to bring that particular position under the, under the roof of county government. I'd just like to bring that back up and ask the rest of the board if they could chime in on that.
I just do need to point out this, is you're exactly right, the board, is you just directed me to, to investigate and come back, and quite frankly, we had had a number of other issues, and, and I hadn't done that, but with, with Ms. Wilks' retirement, now just seemed like the time. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
The history of that is, is worth a merit to, to go back over. When this board in the past formed the Tourist Development Council in the late 80s, early 90s... 90s, somewhere, they formed a not-for-profit corporation in the state of Florida, and they called it Santa Rosa County Tourism Bureau Incorporated or something like that. And that entity had its own employee identification tax number, and tax funds were remitted through the normal channel to us and then fed right back into that corporation. And that corporation had hired the head of the TDC. And it worked with little to no oversight from the board, much like what we saw happening in Ocaloosa County. In 2009, that corporation chose not to renew its charter, and it went inactive. And in doing so, it orphaned its employee identification number, and we had to bring that back in-house. At the time, well, as to the funds, the funds had to stay here, which is fine. But that's where it is. So essentially, Ms. Wilks has no supervisor and no employee because she is a Landrum employee, because that's what she was when the corporation was paying her payroll. Now, that corporation no longer exists, and so the county with TDC funds, because that's how that position is funded throughout the entire state of Florida is with TDC funds, is making that payroll payment to Landrum, to her. So, it's kind of a convoluted arrangement, and this is a place where we have the opportunity to fix it. But I open the floor to anybody else with a comment. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I remember the discussion, and one of my concerns was back when we discussed it, what would that organizational structure look like? Who would they report to? Where would they be staffed? And that's what we had directed Mr. Walker to do. I agree with less government, but at the same time, we went through this with the old team, Santa Rosa, and a lot of it had to do with transparency and accountability. And I don't see a lot of difference in what we're looking at now versus what we did with the old economic development program.
Some similarity to that. I do think that with this, I think that we can, we will have the structure. I think the key was is that the TDC is just a recommending body. They don't exist to hire and fire and do those type things. Now, if, I certainly wouldn't mind trying to work with them on some kind of shortlist or involving them in the process. I'm not exactly sure what that would look like. That's a little different than what we would normally do, but I don't think the team Santa Rosa analogy is that far off. It's some similar.
Commissioner Litcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How do you contemplate filling that position? Were you thinking about bringing that, those applicants to the board? Or, because this is not, this is not an employee of the commission. I mean, we typically, we select county administrator, county attorney, but everything else you handle in-house. So, I heard interviews and bring them in front of this board and then the TDC board, but what's our game plan going forward?
Yeah. I mean, it is.
And we only have 30 days until Kate is no longer our executive director.
No pressure. I understand that, and we may just have to talk to Ms. Wilks about extending that. I mean, we need to maybe work through some of those issues. But my plan was to treat it like a normal recruitment position with Mr. Ogletree and I responsible for that. There will be an employment contract that will come back to the board. I mean, I recognize that that's not how it's been done, but it's not been within the county. So, that was what I had envisioned, and I really, quite frankly, still don't know that I particularly got my mind wrapped around how we ought to include the TDC. I can appreciate what Commissioner Cole's saying. I think that's important. I'm just, I'm not sure how to do that practically and expeditiously. It's a long way to say, I don't know.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williamson.
I just, for the county staff that will be doing the search, we need to make sure that's open and well-publicized. I mean, three weeks, to me, seems a little rushed for a position that's this important to our county. I mean, tourism in our county is so important, and we need to make sure that we have the highest talent pool possible to fill.
I agree, and certainly not gonna be any problem to extend that to the four weeks or the 30 days, whatever, would seem to make sense. I think, quite frankly, I'm gonna be very surprised if we don't have a very good talent pool to choose from. I think you're gonna be, I think we're gonna be very, very pleasantly surprised at the quality of people, and Ms. Wilks has done an outstanding job. But I think, I really do think that in a lot of respects, is you sense that we're really poised to go to the next step on this?
We have made great strides under this modified model we're using, and I might point out that the model that the county administrator's discussing right now is pretty much the way the rest of the state handles it. Not that that makes it right, wrong, or indifferent, but that's the typical way of dealing with it. It is, tourism to this part of the world is as important as anything else, as the military or the timber industry or anything else. Yes, ma'am. Would you like to make a comment?
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90, East Milton. How do you determine performance on something like this? How do they earn their money?
That's a very good point. She, it's unfair to place an employee in the position where, you know, there's nobody saying, "Hey, that's a good job. You need to tighten up here and change this approach here." And we haven't been making those sorts of inputs, and it's a very valid, very, very valid point you make.
So, there should be some way that you can gauge whether or not they're doing what you want them to do? So, you have to be able to tell them what to do?
Yeah. Not that Kate hasn't done a good job, because Kate is a self-starter and has just done a superb job, but you're absolutely correct. You point out a very.
Ms. Cantu. That was why, when I went over, there's a job description, and with a list of duties, each of our positions is evaluated annually by their supervisor, which in this case would be Mr. Ogletree, and the strengths, and what they do well, what they don't do well, how the program's going. Also, in this particular regard, you could include the TDC in that because primarily the position will continue to be housed in the visitor information center, as will be the two other employees that are in the function down there. It won't change. Mr. Ogletree will provide them some supervision, and then the primary responsibility is obviously the TDC funds themselves, and then to be the primary staff for the tourist development council. And then to bring those recommendations back to the board to complete the action and have it done.
Where's the pot of money they're gonna be drawing from?
That would be the tourist development tax proceeds that are generated by the accommodations tax, or commonly called the bed tax.
So, that's not something that county taxpayers are gonna be funding?
Well, it's paid by people that rent the rooms, the tourists, the people that come through. Now, if you have house guests down, and everybody decides to go to the beach or go someplace and rent a hotel room, you'll have a bed tax to pay as well. But it, probably 85% of it, 90% of it comes from our visitors.
And where's the bed tax going now?
Well, it's collected, and it's being spent by the TDC under the oversight of this board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Mahoot.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I just had a question. If the services are being paid through Landrum, doesn't that cost more? Does Landrum charge a fee?
Actually, the reason that, if you recall from the discussion that we had in February when this matter came up, is that the use of Landrum is in partnership with the, in the lease agreement with the Navarre Chamber that is housed within the visitor information center. The choice that the board, that the TDC at that time, in the early 90s, they used Landrum is actually because it's cheaper. The employees were not, they weren't county employees. They were paid at a different rate. They weren't subject to the flawed retirement system, the health insurance, and the benefit package, if you will. So, it was the effort by the TDC at that time to maximize the amount of funds going into the marketing in the traditional tourist development efforts and the least amount of administrative funds that they need to spend. So, the answer is, it's cheaper.
And if you decide to keep it that way, it would cost less instead of bringing it in-house? Is that correct?
I think if we, it's gonna be hard. In other words, Commissioner Melvin was correct. It's kind of an orphan, an orphan structure right now. I mean, they're in this no man's land, if you will, as far as oversight and supervision, and the, it just, it would be, it's just difficult to track and to deal with.
So, that's what you're going to be working on, coming up with a solution, putting it in-house or leaving it as it is?
Right. What we're dealing with is kind of a patchwork quilt, and what we're trying to do is make it a more business-like streamlined model.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's not, Wallace, let's be clear, is that if this proposal moves forward, we're gonna be bringing the position in-house. There's not gonna be, I don't know that we need to study anymore. We need to replace an executive director and do that by August 1, so we're gonna start proceeding in that direction.
So, your main goal is being able to be more interactive with them and to have more oversight and communication?
Yeah. And the overall goal is to avoid the situation we saw in Ocaloosa County where the tax dollars were illegally spent and squandered to provide the proper oversight, which is what we're doing now, but we'd bring it up better if we get it this way. Commissioner Cole, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I gotta argue against the lack of oversight. We got folks like Kyle Hawley, Jack Samborn, Lori Gallops, Vernon Compton, that sit on these boards, and many others. I'm sorry if, you know, I don't recall the names. And in fact, Mr. Chairman, you sit on this board also, so I don't see where we can justify the lack of oversight and including.
I was speaking in the past tense.
The, you know, the expenditures that we've seen in Ocaloosa County versus what you see here in Santa Rosa County. I think it's been very well-run, the way it's been going on, and is all the things that Mr. Walker named, the addition of retirement, the addition of all the different items on this position becomes a county employee. And then I don't think we're talking about a county employee, because certainly this director's gonna have to have some staff personnel. So, will she be a county employee and staff be TDC-paid? Or, I really see the way out of this is to get the 501(c)(3) stood back up, where everything that Mr. Chairman named earlier is like it should be, and then continue with Landrum on the employment, so we don't run into this additional cost to the county citizens. I think we certainly have the oversight and the ability to maybe even increase that oversight if there's some concern there, but.
Have they been consulted? How do they feel about it? I mean, they might, they might have some views that might help you make your decisions.
Well, I've spoke to several of the TDC members, and they would very, very much want to be included in this decision-making, so.
Okay.
They've been making inputs to each of the five of us via email over the last 30 days or so, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I recommend we move this item to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna object to the idea that we bring this in-house. I certainly know we need to fulfill the position as soon as possible. I agree with that, but I want a caveat on there that I'm not agreeing to bringing it in-house at this point.
All right. We'll see what the staff brings us on Thursday. Okay, we'll move that to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number six is discussion of a letter to Congressman Miller and Senators Nelson and Rubio regarding facilitating permitting by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the Navarre Beach Renourishment Project. Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There's an email in your packet from Michael Walther with Coastal Tech regarding proceeding with at least asking our congressional delegation to intercede in our behalf with this permitting. I believe we've done that in the past, always, not one of the things I like to do, but apparently our consultant thinks it's time to do that, and that'll at least get that. We're kind of held up, and I don't think it's so much with the Corps of Engineers. I believe it's with National Fisheries regarding the permits as we try to work through that process. So, it's just to ask the congressional delegation to use their good offices.
Ask for their assistance. I agree completely, and I'd like some discussion from the board because carrying this forward to Thursday only adds to the delay. I think this is a good idea, and if the board approves, we can ask the staff to go ahead and prepare a letter, and we can get that moving this week without waiting until Thursday. But let's open that up to comments, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought something was recently passed through the legislature, and I'm not sure if it includes the federal government, on expediting permitting a little more, where comment periods wouldn't go one after the other, but they would follow along the same time path. And I've heard from several agencies where the corps seems to be the holdup. Our local Florida DEP is expediting permits faster than they ever have, but it seems like the bottleneck gets to where, when you're with the Army Corps. And I thought we worked through this a while back and was trying to get everybody on the same page on this permitting process. I'm 100% for let's move this thing forward today so we can expedite it.
Okay. Anybody else have an opinion contrary to that? I'd like you to prepare a letter.
We've got the letter, and we'll just.
Please, and I will get that out of here and drop a signature on it today if you can get the letter ready. And we will consider that one closed. Ms. Cantu, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90, East Milton. What's the purpose of the beach nourishment?
Yes, ma'am. It fills in, the natural ebb and flow of the beach erodes in places and fills in in places, but when you have a tourist industry, the practice over the last 30, 40 years has been to fill in when your beach has been narrowed down a few times in the last 10, 15 years. We've had the beach road up underneath the large buildings on the island. So, it's just, you have to put the beach back. It doesn't stay there. There's a natural drift. It's called the Latorial Drift, and it goes in a counterclockwise motion. It's in the Gulf of Mexico, so.
And how frequently has this been done?
About every 10 years, I think. That's an inch, is that about right? About every 10 years.
How much does it cost?
About $12, $14 million.
And is that something that the tourist people pay for?
The Tourist Development Tax Act has specific categories that you can spend money on and can't spend money on, and I'm not sure that it allows that. Generally, it's been done with a combination of MSBUs and general fund plus grants from various departmental federal departments.
Also, Ms. Cantu, let me ask you a question. I assume you wanted an answer. Is the tourist development tax that this board last year had enabled an additional penny that's prescribed by the state legislature? We have passed that. I believe that's been collected currently, and they will pay a portion. The people that own structures out there that have invested interest in this pay a percentage of this through the MSBU process. We will, we're in the process to receive state funding for approximately half of the project, which is how the state does. The state has an interest that beaches be protected and the tourism industry be enhanced, and then the remainder of that will come through. The county will be responsible for the public access areas, which are our park and the public swimming areas. public swimming areas. So that's typically, it's kind of a blend of the funding. And I believe we have two of the recent, maybe Isaac and one of the other storms that we had received, some FEMA money that will allow us to be put towards that.
Are we doing something or not doing something that we should that makes it worse? So there's nothing that we could do that would make it any less eroding than it is now?
The latatorial drift is... It goes east, it goes south, and then it goes west.
So these buildings that the sand is being washed out from under, should they not be there?
No, no, no. Don't mix apples and oranges. What we're talking about is beach renourishment. And that's from the berm down to the waterline, and that's the public beach. And behind the berm is a private... That's a personal issue with the property owner, and that's where the MSBU process comes in. So don't mix those two.
So we're not replacing sand underneath buildings?
Not at this point in time. Should another major storm come and they look to us for an MSBU, we facilitate that through an MSBU.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Andrea McDermott, 8093 Sleepy Bay Boulevard. You mentioned that it's just to go to replace the sand from buildings that may be going away. It's more than that. It's protection, not just of the tourist industry, but of the homes and the buildings out there and the jobs. There's plenty of us, myself included, that work out there. And, you know, we need the beach to be stabilized and to have a distance. We need the tourism to come in. But we also need the berms and we need the sand to protect when the next storm comes in. We can't sit there and wait and say, oh, well, there's a little bit of beach back there. It's okay because you got somewhere for a beach chair to go. That's not what this is about. This is about protection of the property and protection of the jobs for the people out on Navar Beach. I know that several of you have interests that include there. You may not live there, your office may not be there, but your business is affected in the entire Santa Rosa County. I don't live on the beach. I live on the mainland. I'm willing to pay my fair share of it, MSBU, to cover anything to get that beach re-nourished properly and as it should be. I'm upset that back when we did this seven years ago, no one thought ahead to start putting money away until last year. We knew when we put the beach back that it was gonna need it again, and we know that when we do it this time, it'll need it again. And money shouldn't not be put away. We have to put money away and reserve for it. The bed tax, 1%, I was so glad that went through. I was all for it. That's not gonna cover the entire thing. I think the projection, it's only gonna be about three or four million. The beach renourishment is gonna have to cost between 16 and 20 million dollars, according to the estimates that I've heard. So $3 million, yeah, that helps, but it's not gonna help much, and it's not gonna help us this year. So hopefully you'll consider that. And MSBU does affect... Or the beach renourishment does affect everybody, so, you know, it shouldn't just be the beach residents who have to pay it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next on the agenda is discussion of authorizing engineering to initiate permitting for dredging the area adjacent to the Oriole Beach boat ramp based on public safety concerns. Mr. Walker or Stephen?
Yes, is the... You send your package's request from Midway Fire. They have discussed the concerns with using the Oriole Beach boat ramp. It's too shallow. Most of our south end ramps are... They shoal in as a matter of, again, as a matter of nature. They've asked the county to at least try to obtain permitting to do some level of maintenance or dredging, whether a maintenance dredge proximate to the boat ramp that can break that obstruction there. When this went before the Marine Advisory Committee, they mentioned this two-part thing. There's the short-term maintenance dredge that I'm not even sure we can be permitted for that, and certainly the longer-term dredging. They were talking about going several hundred feet away from the ramp, which I think's gonna be problematic from a permitting perspective, just based on grass beds and the DEP. But at least they've asked us to go through the process of obtaining a permit. Obviously, our engineering staff right now is swamped, but if the board approves, we will start it. We will initiate this to try to work through it. I don't wanna raise expectations because it's the...
Right.
They're the waters of the state, and they do the permitting, and...
Commissioner Cole, you had your line on first.
Cole.
Okay. Commissioner, enter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I've spoken with Chief Kanzig with Midway Fire about this. They're upgrading their rescue boat. Right now, they have a 16-foot Zodiac. They've been able to acquire a 19-foot Boston Whaler to perform water rescues. They do respond to an average of 13 water rescue calls every year. There's a pretty lengthy stretch there of the sound where you don't have good water access from the north side of the sound, and this is kind of right in the middle. You have the ramps down in Gulf Breeze, Shoreline Park, and you have Oriole Beach, then you have Woodlong. Woodlong's a pretty good ramp, but it's a long way from Woodlong down to Shoreline. And Oriole Beach, if we could get that one serviceable for Midway Fire, that would greatly decrease their response times when it comes to water rescues in Santa Rosa Sound, which is heavily traveled. I spent some time out there Saturday.
Michael, do you have anything you want to add to this? I know there's a lot of public input and concern from the boat owners who are unable to enjoy their waterfront property or use their boats, and this doesn't have anything to do with alleviating that. And I don't wanna raise any expectations in the public by them misunderstanding what this is. This is about a different issue.
Yeah, they're unable to launch this Boston, their new rescue boat from Oriole Beach in its current state. They would need it to be enhanced a bit so that they could launch their new rescue vehicle. They used a Zodiac before, an inflatable, rigid inflatable boat, and so now they're moving up to a more suitable response vessel.
Is there enough water in the canal to support that boat once they get it in the I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number eight is discussion of the request from the Magnolia Center for a management agreement of the McAllister Park. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is an email from Ms. Jones regarding their request. I think Commissioner Cole's been involved in this. There's a cemetery that's adjacent to this little park area. A number of years ago, we had discontinued using that as a park based on the neighborhood concerns with vandalism and kind of improper congregation, if you will. And they're just asking that they be able to oversee that property.
And just for clarification, I might add that we somewhat have an old McAllister Park and a new McAllister Park. New McAllister Park is a playground. It's basketball courts. It's adjacent to the Magnolia Center, and that is not what we're talking about. That is staying just exactly as it is. This is a piece of property that the county has no programming on, no equipment on. It kind of has a grown-up basketball court with no goals on it. So we're talking about the old McAllister Park.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney explained it very well. Years ago, Michelle Parker and I were able to come up with a FERDAP ramp to build the new park. We built it in a safer location up there, right beside the Magnolia Center, leaving this park pretty much in the back of this subdivision being unused. Couple of years ago, now it's come to my attention that the cemetery committee would like to have control of that piece of property, much like we do, you know, with our sports associations and stuff, where they'll maintain it, keep it clean, and be able to use it for funeral services, of course, not expand the cemetery there, but just use it for parking and arrangements during those times. We've got several very good citizens that are leading up this endeavor, and I certainly hope the board will see to support it for me. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number nine has been pulled. Item number 10 is discussion of the social media slash digital marketing policies and procedures as recommended by the Public Information Officer. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is that policy that's been developed by Public Information Officer and the county attorney regarding social media and digital marketing and a number of other different things, just as the social media changes the way that most people do business where we're in the same situation. I believe that the impetus for this, I believe, is the emergency management would like to use the Facebook page on this, that especially during activations and emergencies. And so this is just one other way, we hope, to effectively get the word out as we're going through, you know, some kind of emergency situation.
Okay, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number 11 is discussion of the annual renewal of a contract with the Florida Coalition Against Domestic Violence for Domestic Violence Program. Mr. Walker?
This is just the contract with the Florida Coalition that had been done for the last number of years, and that's worked through the Courts Administration Department with the state.
Any other discussion questions? I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number 12 is discussion of scheduling quarterly Board of Commissioners and zoning Board meetings at the Tiger Point Community Center, effective with the respective meetings Thursday, August 14, 2014. Details are in the back up. Unless there's a question or comment from the board, I'll move this without objection to Thursday.
And just to note, the board, it'll be just like you said, is you will have your once a quarter. Both will meet the same date, the one at 9:00 and one at 6:00, and that way, there's only one setup. And then it'll set you up on a normal quarterly basis to be at the Tiger Point Center. It enables our committee, or actually, our committee, our board meeting and planning and zoning to advertise and make those plans as they go through the rezoning and conditional use process.
Mr. Young, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I support this agenda item. I think it's a great idea. But I would like to see the board allocate whatever funds are required, any, whatever amount it takes, so that the live streaming and the communications feedback issues in that facility are taken care of. Since you're gonna have regular meetings in that location, which I think's a great idea, I know there's been some startup problems, and my trying to view those things comes in and out, breaks the signal. I don't... I'm far from being an IT guy, but, you know, obviously what I'm stating is affirm graphs on the obvious. You know you got the problem, and I would like to see the county go forward and, you know, whatever it costs to do it right, let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. If I could, our staff is aware of that, and we're working on getting a permanent solution there for our streaming.
Good morning. Rami Wyatt, 5775 O'Nar Lane. I just want to second what Mr. Young said. Thank you.
I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Item number 13 is information only. Public hearings are scheduled for 9:00 Thursday, 9:30 on Thursday, the 26th this year, being ordinance establishing street lighting municipal service benefit unit for Foxborough, Diamond Creek, Longview, Pace Mill Creek, and Ashley Plantation, and an ordinance establishing paving, water, sewer MSBUs for Ponderosa subdivision, and an ordinance establishing subdivision improvement MSBUs for hidden forest subdivisions, and those will be for this coming Thursday. That was info only. Item 14 is an add-on by the county administrator. Mr. Walker?
Yes, this is the annual resolution establishing the rates for each of the... It'll be, obviously include the new MSBU or the proposed MSBUs, which those are the ones that you're having the ordinance on, and then it will also include all your ongoing MSBU projects. And that those, you establish the tentative rate by resolution. That's advertised. That's sent to every resident that is subject to the MSBU. They're notified of your rate hearing, and then you have your public hearing, and then at the end of that meeting, you finalize the rates for 2014, 2015 budget.
Do we need to move that to Thursday, or was this sufficient? Okay, sir. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. That concludes the administration. Yes, ma'am?
Commissioner, could I ask you to revisit number six on Admin Committee? It was certainly discussed, but if the board took action, I missed it.
I think we took action on that.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll do it again then. The discussion was that we would have a letter for Senators Rubio and Nelson and Congressman Miller, asking their assistance with our delays at the Army Corps of Engineers, and I recommend that we would do that Thursday, and I thought I did so without objection, but I will do it without objection at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I believe the discussion was that we'd go ahead and do it today.
And do it now.
Yes, sir.
Can you make that without objection, that we take care of that today?
The motion is that you, that the staff would prepare that letter, and that I will sign that today before I leave the building, and we'll do that without objection. And here, none, it passes. And next is Engineers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the low bid for Option A for the Pine Blossom Drainage Project to Brown Construction in the amount of $390,000, $353,035.
Okay, and if you guys take a look at that, it's a good price. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Once we approve this on Thursday, Mike, can you tell me how quickly we can get that started?
I think... I think it should be fairly quick, as quick as we can get the insurance together, the contracts, the binding, that type of thing, and then get them started. I mean, we understand the urgency of that, and...
And this is for the big concrete pipe, too, so that'll be nice. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. No, you're not, and just hold your comment as well.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East Milton. My question about the drainage things is, is there anything that we're doing wrong or we should be doing a different way so that there's not the drainage problems that we had with the big storms before we spend any more money on drainage?
What happened in the past storm was that the systems were just totally overwhelmed, and some of the systems failed. In this particular instant, the system here was overwhelmed and induced failure, and we're putting it back with larger, stronger piping.
And so we've learned our lesson, and we're gonna do the things that we should do a different way?
Yes, ma'am, and we're master-planning the major areas in the south with these terrible problems, and this one is up on Pine Blossom, and it's absolute misery for those people, and this fixes it.
And has something that we've done caused harm to other people, something that they're not responsible financially for? They're gonna be corrected?
This was an act of God. It's a terrible 200, 300-year rain, and it overwhelmed what was considered by all authorities to be an adequately-sized system, and we're increasing the size of that system now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I recommend we move Engineering Item Number One to Thursday without objection. Here, none passes. Michael?
Item number two is discussion of the Grand Canal washouts, with quotes, due June 25th, which is this Wednesday, 2014, and that's the Grand Canal. That's on Grand Canal Street and on Beneath. And that's the Grand Canal, that's on Grand Canal Street and on Benetton Way. And it's just the washouts.
This is the placeholder. We'll, we'll open those, uh, bids, uh, Wednesday and hope to bring you back a, a recommendation to, to, to handle this emergency wire.
Okay, we'll move this to, uh, Thursday without objection with the understanding that it is a placeholder. I do so without objection. Here none, it passes.
Item number three is discussion of change order number one to the contract with Pensacola Concrete Construction in the amount of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and nineteen cents. And the addition of eighty-one days for the Navar Beach Water Main Rehabilitation Project.
Okay, um, information is the backup. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here none, it passes.
Items four through seven are subdivisions and these are all contingent upon completed review in our office, which will be due either, yeah, late, late today. But item number four is the discussion of the approval of a preliminary plat for Martinique Place. It's a twenty-eight lot subdivision, a portion of section seventeen, township two south, range twenty-eight west, working district five.
I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Yes.
There's any reason to read those. These, he's just telling you that these four potentially will be on your, your agenda if they, if, if, if they meet their, uh, requirements of the code. I don't know that you need to read them into the record. We don't know, we don't know that they'll be on there for Thursday, they could potentially be.
Well, do you wanna prove them in block?
Typically, y'all just accept that.
All right, uh, just for those watching at home, item number four deals with Martinique. And then, uh, item number six is its companion item, uh, which would approve the construction if the preliminary plat comes in clean with no problems. And then item number five is exactly the same thing. It discusses approving the preliminary plat and approving the construction plans based on the assumption that the preliminary plat has no problems. So we will move items four through seven to Thursday without objection. Here none, passes. That concludes the engineer's report. Uh, Public Services Committee, Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of approval of the amended agreement with Casidian Communications, Inc., expanding the capacity of our emergency call notification system. Uh, the backup in your agenda, any questions about this particular item? If not, I will move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item two, discussion of approval to submit a Citizen Core grant in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars with the match requirement being provided through in-kind services. Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item three, discussion of renewal of the vehicle lease agreement with Pensacola Bay Transportation for the door-to-door public disadvantaged transportation program. I will move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item four, discussion of approval of the two thousand fourteen Escambia Consortium Annual Action Plan for Housing in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. And authorize chairman to sign all related documents. And I will move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item five, discussion of award of the emergency repair bid for fifty-four thirty-nine Tom Sawyer Road, Milton, in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars as the lowest bidder. And approval to exceed the emergency repair program limit of ten thousand dollars. And I will move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item six, discussion of approval of short sale for sixty-nine forty-two Cedar Ridge Road in Milton in lieu of foreclosure and acceptance of one thousand dollars as satisfaction of mortgage. Unless there are any discussions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
And that concludes public services. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynchard. Uh, Public Works Committee, uh, Commissioner Williamson, there is one add-on by Commissioner Cole. Would you, uh, you?
We did not have any other items, but there was the add-on by Commissioner Cole earlier.
Thank you, Chairman Williamson. Appreciate and welcome to the board. Uh, in light of the meeting we had the other night that Commissioner Lynchard held on the south end, and of course, in light of all the problems that we've had recently with stormwater runoff and the discussions that we're having and gonna continue to have, it looks like for quite some time. Uh, it's come to my attention about a, a product called True Grid. And it's available on a website, W W W dot True Grid Pavers dot com. And what it is, is a paving system that basically is non, is a permeable surface. And I'd like to ask the Public Works Department and, and our, uh, engineering and also our permitting department for construction, take a look at this. Uh, I'll have a more complete, uh, presentation for the board on Thursday. Uh, but if, I'd like to ask all the board members to also go to that in the next few days and take a look at it. But it's, it's a, it's a, you know, as, as we continue to pave and, and build buildings, we're gonna only increase our problem on this. And if we can use some of these paved or even landscaped surfaces for dispersment of, of stormwater, I think in the future, we're gonna be a lot better off. This particular product caught my eye because its, its compressive strength is sixty tons per square foot. It's, and it's made of recycled high-density polyethylene, which is a hundred percent post-consumption, post-consumers. It's got a black, uh, UV stabilizer in it. And, uh, if everybody could just take a look at that, we could have more discussion on this. My idea would be that we offer some sort of incentives as you're constructing. If you use this for your parking lot, if you use it for, uh, additional space, uh, different things like that, we could offset the size of perhaps a, a holding pond or, uh, fi, you know, work together as a board with the, you know, construction industry, with the people that wanna build in Santa Rosa County to incentivize the use of this type of thing. So we're not running all our holding pot, all, all, all this water off of hardened surfaces into these ponds that take up all this room.
What was that website again?
It's, uh, W W W True Grid, G R I D, not True Grit. But I think they did that as a spin-off because everybody remembers John Wayne and True Grit, so, uh, dot com. And, uh, go there, see the specs and, uh, you know, certainly, you know, Avis and his people and, and. Give me some better input on this or give the board some better input. But to me, it looks like something we really need to consider in the future.
Can we, can we bring that back maybe to have Mr. Whitfield's group go back and, 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 and Mr. Bladelock and bring that back in two weeks? I think we can look at that, uh, and, and, and maybe, maybe get our thoughts together on that.
Okay, uh, when I, um, they're shipping me a sample and I believe a CD to use as, you know, as a presentation. I'll just pass that on to you guys and.
Yeah, I was just.
Get it back to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no other items.
Thanks, sir. Uh, last, uh, next is Budget Finance Management Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, discussion of bids received for one six thousand gross vehicle, uh, WR, half-ton pickup truck, building, for building maintenance, low bidder. Meeting specifications is Hub City Ford Incorporated with a bid of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. I'd ask to move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of bids received for three, one-ton, fifteen-passenger, one for parks, two for road and bridge, is low bidder. Coming closest to meeting specifications is McKenzie Buick GMC with a bid of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ten dollars each. I'd ask that that be moved to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of bids received for one nine thousand, two hundred pound GVWR, three-quarter ton crew cab pickup truck with a service body, road and bridge. Low bidder meeting specification is Jarrett Gordon Ford with a bid of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item number four, discussion of bids received for three ninety-two thou, ninety-two hundred GVWR, three-quarter ton crew cab, four-wheel-drive pickup trucks for road and bridge. Low bidder meeting specifications is Hub City Ford Incorporated with a bid of two thousand, twenty-six thousand, four dollars each. I ask that we move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item five is discussion of bids received for one six thousand GVWR, half-ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck for engineering, low bidder meeting specifications is Hub City Ford Incorporated with a bid of twenty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item six is discussion of bids received for one six thousand GVWR, half-ton pickup truck for mosquito control, low bidder meeting specifications is Jarrett Gordon Ford with a bid of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item seven is discussion of bids received for one six thousand GVWR, half-ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck, again for mosquito control, low bidder meeting specification is Hub City Ford Incorporated with a bid of twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item eight is discussion of bids received for one ninety-two hundred GVWR, three-quarter ton pickup truck outfitted with an animal control unit body for animal services. Low bidder meeting specifications is Hub City Ford Incorporated with a bid of forty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Mr. Chairman, I wanna get with Mr. Gomillion. Uh, I'll move this to Thursday without objection, but I do wanna get with Mr. Gomillion on this particular, uh, truck. Uh, and I could ask Tony now if you happen to know, uh, are we buying this as a replacement unit or are we upping the fleet one truck?
Replacement.
Okay, what about the box that's currently on the unit? I, I, I got a little bit of problem with why we can't buy just a chassis and use the existing box and, uh, have.
Yeah.
Have that re, you know, fitted to the new, to the new chassis.
Well, I'll, I'll go back a couple of years. We had, uh, one of the things that we had dealt with, uh, in our older boxes were, they were fiberglass boxes. And we run into a lot, lot of issues relative to the, uh, long-term durability of the fiberglass vibration, the cracks, and then the, the health issues related to the perme, permeability of the broken fiberglass. So we really have found that we wanted to get, kinda standardize our units. And then we, we really did run into, when we tried to, to put units onto existing chassis, we ended up with, uh, problems, uh, of trying to do that internally in-house or either getting the units and making them comparable. So we'd made a decision a couple of years ago that the best, most efficient route was to just buy the package unit, have the vendor get those assembled and warranty, cover everything in one, one piece, rather than people pointing fingers at each other about incompatibility. So that, that's the, uh, that, that'd be the best answer I have, I think, for your question.
So the, the box that we're replacing is one of the old fiberglass boxes?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, I, I'll agree with this if that's the case, but if it's one of our newer boxes, I think we need to revisit that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, well, I'll get some answers for the board by Thursday and we'll.
Okay.
We'll take this to Thursday without objection then and deal with it there.
All right, item number nine is discussion of rejection of bids received for compact pickup trucks from Public Works Services and rebid request. I do so without, or move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item ten, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one thirty-nine in the amount of three hundred and four thousand. To carry forward funds in the general fund for design services for the Santa Rosa Courthouse. This action was approved at August eighth, two thousand thirteen, Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Move that without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item eleven, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one four zero in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars to carry forward funds in the general fund to evaluate an additional site in downtown Milton for the location of the new Santa Rosa County courthouse. Is approved at the June twelfth, two thousand fourteen, regular Board of County Commissioner meeting. Do so without objection and carrying that to Thursday.
Here none, it passes.
Item twelve is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one four one in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. To recognize insurance claim payments received for fire vehicle repairs due to the April twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen flood and allocate expenditures in the self-insurance fund. I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item thirteen is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one four two in the amount of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars to transfer funds from the capital fund to the general fund for a pickup truck for the building maintenance department and a passenger van for Parks Department. Got a question right there. I thought we were, already did one for Parks, a van. Okay, all right, thank you. I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
All right, item fourteen, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one four three in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars to carry forward road and bridge funds for the compact tractor, track loader at seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars is approved at the June twelfth, two thousand fourteen, Board of County Commissioner regular meeting. And for two passenger vans, uh, fifty-nine thousand, twenty dollars. One, a ninety-two hundred GVWR crew cab pickup truck and three ninety-two hundred GVWR four-wheel-drive pickup trucks at seventy-eight thousand, twelve dollars. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item fifteen, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one forty-one in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars to transfer funds from the capital fund to the general fund for one gas vehicle pickup truck for the animal service department. That's the item we discussed earlier and I'll move that to Thursday with the caveats. I do so without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Item sixteen is discussion of county expenditures and check registers, which is on my desk and I'll have that prepared for the chairman's signature by Thursday and I'll move that till then without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes budget finance committee report.
Thank you, sir. Next is public forum. Anybody have anything they wanna bring before the board?
Sandra Cantu, ninety-five seventy-seven Highway ninety East Milton. Have two questions. First thing is about safety. I would request that you all talk with the Department of Transportation to change the amount of time that a caution light is on yellow to reduce the amount of traffic accidents in the intersection. If you require the lane that is getting a green light to wait a little bit longer when the light is red for the other direction, then there'll be less tendency for people to take off before the oncoming traffic or the traffic from the other direction goes through the intersection. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes.
Is that, does that make sense?
Yep, you're talking about the length of the yellow light now or you're talking about?
Increase the amount of time that the yellow light is on.
Yeah.
So it's less time before the green light or more time before the green light comes on.
Understood.
Something like that, okay. The other question I had was about the Air Force's use of Blackwater Forest. Has anything been done about trying to get them to change their idea about using Blackwa, Blackwater River Forest instead of their own, um, property?
Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Sandra, I've, I've been looking at that and I have some questions. In fact, after the meeting this morning, I wanna get with Randy Roy about setting up a, a meeting with myself and some of the Air Force counterparts to Randy. Uh, I, I think you've seen this board time after time support our military mission and whiting and the Air Force. But I, my question being is, do, do they have to do everything they have in grassy? Uh, some of those things may be a little more acceptable to citizens, but certainly not all of them, uh, like the low-flying aircraft and stuff. I've got some questions about that. And my other question too is they, they spent millions of dollars moving the seventy-seventh Special Forces Group to Eglin Air Force Base. That had to be studied for years prior to being done. So my question is, why wasn't this operation or this portion of their operations included in that planning study rather than come to the citizens after the fact and wanna use state parks? So I, I, I've, I've got some questions I'd like to get answered before I get on board with this entirely. I, I certainly wanna support our military. I've got, you know, three sons, two sons and a son-in-law currently serving. So I know how important it is for training and the mission, but I, I, I like a lot of sys- how important it is for training and the mission, but I, I like, a lot of citizens have some questions as to why, as big as Eglin is, they can't compress some of that and get it on Eglin. And also, Tyndale Air Force Base has a lot of land not being used. Why can't some of this be done at Tyndale? So I'm gonna be questioning that.
Well, for the little, little amount of extra property that would give the Air Force and the high amount of property that would take away from the civilian people here, it just seems to me like they could do something different. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your question.
Wallace Mahook, 5,500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I was wondering, there's been a lot of activity at the Sandy Bottoms Building, and I was wondering, it seems that it's being remodeled for use as real estate offices. I don't remember anything coming before the board on that issue. Where are these funds coming from, and why is this not a public, why isn't it publicly disclosed?
You're talking about if you're in a real estate office, that was specifically, not exclusively a real estate office, that a real estate office be offered in conjunction with the convenience store there, that was specifically approved by this board when the assumption agreement was, was approved. If you're talking about remodeling, the county did some repair to the roof and in the air conditioning system and the floor, which were all demolished, and the tenant, I believe is, I'm not sure what they're doing as far as remodeling, but I believe that they are.
So the remodeling that's being done is not being paid for by the county?
That's right.
But the air conditioners were?
They were leaking and damaging the ceiling. I'm not entirely certain, I'm not an air conditioner person, but yes, that, that we took care of, the county took care of.
Okay, I just, I guess I was always under the assumption that the person holding the lease on that building, so the, the new person holding that lease, should they not have been responsible for the air conditioners?
That, that damage and those repairs were begun kind of in the hiatus, if you will, and we did go ahead and finish those up.
Andrea McDermott, 8093 Sleepy Bay Boulevard, Navar. I just had three quick questions. With the waste management, starting the recycling again, it's my understanding that they've cut back drivers, and I know that just the regular pickups have taken longer in recent months, or the recent month since the recycling stopped, because now we have one truck coming through and they have to make more loads to the dump more often, and where my trash was usually picked up about 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock in the morning is now getting done at 7:00 at night. So I was wondering with bringing back the recycling, if they're going to increase the amount of drivers they have so that it will eliminate this problem. I'm not sure if you can answer that today, but hopefully you can get an answer on that.
We, I don't know that our agreement, they have to meet certain performance requirements if they're not, we don't know how many drivers they have. They just have to collect the garbage twice a week and have to collect the recyclers once a week, and then also once a week on the vegetative material.
Well, the recycle truck hasn't been coming recently because of the, you know, not having a recycling center, I would imagine, and that makes the trucks have to go to the dump more. I've spoken to the drivers, and they've had some recent cutbacks also in their department, but sometimes we don't even get picked up till the next day. There's been a few weeks where we've been missed totally on the first or second, and so, you know, we're only getting picked up once a week because of that. And it's all through Navar. It's not just my subdivision, but it's many subdivisions that I manage that I'm seeing this also, because apparently people get worked up about trashcans in the front of people's houses, so I get to hear a lot about it. But if you could just, you know, find out what's going on with that.
What we would need you to do, Ms. McDermott, would be is, is when our staff gets the notification of that, we have, we have the environmental department, we have a relationship with both our contractors, so we can make sure that their performance meets that. We just need to give us notification of that. Just send me an email and we'll get the answer.
Okay, I can't speak to Waste Pro because I don't deal with them, but I know that I've had some problems in my neighborhoods. Also, on 399, I appreciate that you got that fixed for us quickly. I did have a question. I noticed you used the concrete bag method instead of poured concrete. Was that because it was cheaper, more effective, or, I mean, why was that chosen instead of having a poured concrete ditch?
We commonly use bag riprap for head wall construction such as that, and been very successful with it.
Yeah, I mean, I know in the country we used to use that a lot, and it was easier for us, but I wasn't sure why the county would have done that instead of the poured concrete.
If installed properly, it'll be there for many, many years.
Oh, yes, okay. And then also, you're talking about the water company and doing the work on the concrete work on that. One of the problems that I have is that we don't get notification when the water's gonna be shut off for a planned outage like that. I understand there's times where there's not planned outages, but we have some very expensive pumps in those buildings on the beach, and when we have them run dry, you know, it causes damage to the impellers and such inside. So, you know, if we could just get a notice, if you just sent it to the association manager for that building, that would be enough, because we could get maintenance to turn them off during the outage times and keep from damaging these pumps that have run $10,000 apiece.
You're talking specifically about Navar Beach, I mean?
Navar Beach, right. And that's what you were talking about, the Navar Beach water, where they're doing the concrete work, and so they're gonna have to turn the water off. And if they could just let us know ahead of time, I'd appreciate it. You know, I put in all kinds of things, like, you know, low-flow preventers and, and electrical things.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll make sure that word gets out a little bit better from now on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address as if we don't all know yet. Turn the light on, Murray. Push your button, there you go.
Murray Hamilton, 4244 Burbank Drive. I do have a safety concern I'd like to bring to your attention if it happened already. The Gulf Pond Creek Bridge, I know it's been in existence a long time, it's very narrow. I travel that route very frequently, and on a few occasions, I have witnessed some near-miss accidents concerning pedestrians on bikes and walking, and it gets very, very narrow at times, and I've seen people swerve over another lane trying to avoid someone in there. So I just wanna bring this to your attention that you can take a look at if someone happened already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lentchild.
And just, just to let you know, we have discussed that very bridge several times at the Transportation Planning Organization, and that's part of the study area that's undergoing consideration right now.
I assume that's one on 90 and?
The one near Taco Bell on 90?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's being studied right now.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything else to come forth, board? Your nun, we are adjourned.